We're going to get started with the first part of the agenda for us immediately. After following the agenda, we'll move on to the public portion. Before we get started, I want to welcome, I guess, a class from Rutgers here tonight. Thanks for coming. I hope you find this a little more interesting than I do. You have amendments from August 15th. There are no ordinances on second reading. We have ordinances on first reading, O-101201, and orders to amend various provisions of the revised or ordinances related to traffic control in the vicinity of the Fitness and Wellness Center.
The previous address was that the effect of day tours that the ordinance has had is the standing one. I got a call late this afternoon. In order to become the sole responsible, that should be amended to read. This ordinance constitutes an emergency. It's provided by NJHS 3698, there's one eighty-one B. Can't be affected immediately if it's on file task. That's the usual language that we use with emergency. I haven't had time to type it. Just feel the effects in there, in fact, in moving here. Should go around.
You know what the office is?
I'm just going to ask the guy who's making pictures to don't be obstructive, but you can move around, but just don't be obstructive.
Okay, thank you. O-101202, an ordinance to accept the dedication of Kirkpatrick Street, Patterson Street to French Street. Wrong resolutions, R-101230, approved agenda amendments, thirty-one, approved payroll from nine twenty-nine, three ten twelve, thirty-two authorized income for the deep tax sales recipients, thirty-three, a resolution to establish requirements for responsible bidders on public contracts, thirty-four, approved amendment, resolution R-051237, reason is to pay the additional legal fees in addition to nine hundred and eighty-four dollars to Missler and Missler, matter of Andrew Weiss versus Rodriguez, from two hundred and twenty-one dollars to one thousand two hundred and five dollars. Thirty-five, authorized persons are active, this is the responsible contractor resolution, and we have the NSA to iron out the latest wrinkles. I got a call from Mr. Egan today, as a result of which, we want to think about about four words in paragraph five. We put a threshold in there, we geared to a hundred thousand dollars, and ten employees in one state half of Brooklyn City twice. Just every dollar. Check that through the page between number one. Thirty-five, authorized purchase by police department under state contract from Dave Chevrolet to one two thousand thirteen Chevrolet Tahoe, not to exceed twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty-five cents. Thirty-six, crewed use of seventy-five thousand dollars of CBBG funds where the Intersect fund is for assistance to microenterprises. This is done through the fair and open contract. Thirty-seven, authorized payment for emergency procurement water utility departments for distribution building, number three, the Carroll Lingle Switch with WPCS International, not to exceed five hundred and six dollars and eighty-eight cents. Thirty-eight, approved amendment of resolution R-011251, reason is increase in number of tax appeals with D. Francesco, Bacon, Coley, Yost, and Coosman, Davis, and Lair, from five thousand to ten thousand dollars. Thirty-nine, approved amendment of resolution R-111107, for reason is twenty-twelve overage charging amount of one hundred and fifty dollars for police department digital copy machine Rico from three thousand five forty-four seventy-two to three thousand six eighty-four seventy-two.
Next two.
Forty, approved amendment of resolution R-021113, twenty-twelve overage charging amount of three hundred and twenty-five dollars for copy machine from thirteen thousand two forty-eight to thirteen thousand five seventy-three. Forty-one, approved amendment of resolution R-220905, two thousand eleven and two thousand twelve overage charges, the amount of two thousand twenty-five dollars, eleven thousand nine thirty and forty cents to thirteen thousand nine fifty-five and forty cents. Forty-two, approved purchase by police department under state contract from Motorola, this is for eighty-five batteries, not to exceed two thousand five hundred and fourteen dollars. Forty-three, approved purchase by fire department under state contract from Motorola, five Motorola XTL, twenty-five hundred mobile radios and accessories, not to exceed thirteen thousand two hundred and fifteen dollars. Forty-four, approved purchase by fire department under state contract with WPCS International for installation of the five Motorola mobile radios, not to exceed two thousand two hundred dollars. Forty-five, resolution authorized payments to the New Brunswick Parking Authority for the County Open Space Grant for the Fitness and Wellness Center, three million dollars. Forty-six, approved purchase by police department under state contract with WPCS International, installation of the four mobile radio console system, not to exceed two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Forty-seven, authorized tax credit to transfer credits on several tax and utility accounts. Forty-eight, approved warrant of contract for three years of statewide elevator maintenance and repairs, November first, two thousand twelve, through October thirty, first, two thousand fifteen, not to exceed sixteen thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars. Forty-nine, approved off premises raffle at twenty-one Union Street, five Sigma Sigma, eight, November fourth, two thousand twelve. Fifty, request for use of city property, street closure requested by New Brunswick Police Department and New Brunswick Domestic Violence Awareness Coalition, a rally and march on various streets, beginning on Joyce Kilmer at the teen center, Javelin on Sanford Street, Remsen Avenue, Sudan, French, ending at Joyce Kilmer Avenue at the teen center again, Saturday, October twentieth, from eleven AM to two PM. Fifty-one, approved request for street closure requested by Russell University Recreation Department and New Brunswick Recreation Department, for an annual tour to Rutgers, twenty-twelve fourteen mile campus bike tour, the date is Sunday, October twenty-first, from nine AM to two PM, police action duty is required. Fifty-two, approved warrant of contract for people for uniforms and New Brunswick uniforms applied for work uniforms for various departments, not to exceed thirty-seven thousand four hundred and twenty-four dollars and eighty cents, period is October eighteenth, two thousand twelve, to October seventeenth, two thousand seventeen. Fifty-three, approved authorization of bid requested by the engineering department for fuel storage tanker removal at various locations. Fifty-four, approved authorization of bid requested by the Waring for the Remsen Avenue Community Center Fire Department Museum Project. Fifty-five, approved fiber optic cable agreement, overarmist agreement, requested by Light Tower Fiber Networks, Blue Street, Somerset Street, High Street, and Prospect Street for fiber optic services offered in Johnsonville. Fifty-six, approved warrant of contract for two years to development directions, providing rehab managed services to the city of New Brunswick. This is done through the fair and open contract. Fifty-seven, approved amendment of resolution R-031205, reason to add an additional eight thousand dollars to existing contracts of twenty-twelve with looming kennel for kennel services, year two thousand twelve, from seventy thousand four ninety-nine to twenty-five thousand four ninety-nine. Fifty-eight, approved amendment of resolution R-101221, correct date from October twenty-first, two thousand twelve, to October twenty-seventh, this is for an on-premises raffle at the higher DUC, requested by, I think, Saint Anthony's Church. Fifty-nine, approved warrant of contract with.
We've asked if that'd be held.
Which one, this one?
Yes.
All right, so fifty-nine will be held, sixty being pulled out because of the chief financial officer.
Mr. Reseen, if you don't mind, let's explain why fifty-nine is being held. We received a bid protest by the second low bidder this morning, challenging some of the information in the low bidder's documents. Regrettably, we're going to lose three weeks of project schedule by holding it tonight, but I think we have no choice but to look at the bid protests in more detail and then we'll locate it again as well.
All right. Sixty-one, authorized purchase by city administrator under state contract from Celebrity Ford through Business and Bike, Air Ford, for one, two thousand thirteen Ford Explorer, not to exceed twenty-three thousand seven hundred and ten dollars. Sixty-two, approved acceptance and execution of grant agreement with United States Environmental Protection Agency for raw water pumping station improvements, amount is two hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. Sixty-three, approved amendment of resolution R-071226, reason is additional three thousand two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and seventy cents for final payment to USA architect, planners, and interior designers, extra masonry work to remove or rebuild.
Parapet walls.
Parapet wall and broken stone.
As part of the water intrusion investigation, they had to take some of the stones and walls apart to see what condition they were in, what kind of flashing was used on the original construction.
And financing.
Yes, there's a lot to be concerned about.
I guess as good as they find that's on the bed and it's.
I will tell you that the condition of the flat roof has a good five years of useful life left in it. The masonry around the perimeter of the roof is not in great shape.
Sixty-four, resolution for approval to submit a grant application, execute a grant agreement with the New Jersey Department of Transportation, for the New Jersey Transportation Trust Fund Act Municipal Aid, two thousand thirteen, Hampton Street Road improvements. So that's good. Sixty-five, resolution for approval to submit a grant application, execute a grant agreement to New Jersey Department of Transportation for the New Jersey Transportation Trust Fund. This is for Sudan Street Road. And sixty-six, approved on-premises raffle of the stress factory for PTA Memorial School Peace Brunswick, November eighteen. Are there any add-ons?
No.
No. We don't have any items for discussion. We're now going to move into the public portion of the meeting. Me and a couple of court clerks, please roll.
Councilmember Egan.
Here.
Councilmember Escobar.
Here.
Councilmember Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President Reseen.
Here. Please be invited with the motion requiring to go from public meeting acting while satisfying the annual notice, which gives sufficient notice of time and place of conduct of all public meetings in municipal council, and filed with the city clerk placed on appropriate voting board in a lot of city halls, has been transmitted to the official newspaper, Amity Home News Tribune. Please leave us, please.
Have flag, we think.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands on one nation, on the God, in the principle, liberty, and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment, as promised, for all those that have human lives in conference and assemblies. Thank you. We have minutes from August fifteenth, November twelfth. Motion to accept the minutes.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President Reseen.
Aye. We do not have any ordinance on second reading. We have ordinance on first reading, O-101201, in order to amend various provisions of the revised or ordinances related to traffic control in the vicinity of the Fitness and Wellness Center. Move the order. Move the order.
Second.
Sitting down, November seventh. For public hearing, same day as we advertised.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President Reseen.
Aye.
O-101202, an ordinance to accept the dedication of Kirkpatrick Street, Patterson Street to French Street.
Move the ordinance sitting down, November seventh, for public hearing, same day as we advertised.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President Reseen.
Aye.
We have resolutions R-101230 through R-101266, fifty-nine is being held, and sixty have been pulled. Does anyone from the public wish to comment on any of these resolutions? Mr. Cradville, name of address, please.
Yes, Charles Cradville, eighty-six Patterson Street, Brunswick. I wanted to commend the council on the Intersect Fund monies. I think that's a great thing. Wanted to ask about number sixty-four, the Hamilton Street improvements, what would that have been sound?
Mr. Golden, Hamilton Street.
Yeah, we applied for a grant from the DOT to improve add from from the municipal boundary all the way to George Street. Primarily would be a mill and pave, but we will be doing sidewalk and concrete ramp improvements as well as some drainage.
Would there be any improvements at the intersections, like new crosswalks or traffic lights?
Not question.
Yes. There will be new crosswalks.
Thank you. Wanted to ask about the Ford Explorer in the administrator's office. What's the use of that vehicle?
The, my office has the use of a Ford Escape at the moment of which we are transferring to the water utility for their use, and we find it helpful to have a vehicle accessible for my department.
And is this related to the new, a new person being brought in to run the water utility?
Yes, it is related to that hire, which if you would like to.
Why would we do times any, you can introduce the name.
There's a gentleman in the audience by the name of Frank Marasha. Frank is a professional in the public water business for thirteen years, has a degree from Rutgers, a second degree from Richard Stockton, has three licenses in the treatment, distribution, and actually on sewer sanitation area. He's a great hire. We're happy to have him join the team, and I would ask if you might welcome him this evening.
Where do you go? You're just standing up. You can't do that. I gotta see where you are. Well, welcome to the city. I look forward to, well, I have a couple of months to work with you, but believe me, that breaks my heart. But welcome aboard, and I look forward to your service to the city. Thank you. I know that you're long and exhausted of service, so I'm happy to have some more.
Hey, sorry. Thank you. I also want to welcome him aboard. Wanted to ask about fifty-six, Development Directions LLC, what does that case is for? Use of hatch.
They're the contract manager for the rehab program that we have. We annually go out every two years to hire somebody to do the actual taking of the applications, managing each project, and they were the most responsive bidder on the RFP this time.
So they've done business with the city before?
No.
Oh, this is the first time.
They're new.
Okay, thanks. I see fiber optic cables being installed in the fifth ward. I think that's awesome. What does that mean for the people that live on those streets, Somerset High and Prospect Street? Does it mean they'll have different choices or more choices?
This is for Robert Wood Johnson.
The Remsen Avenue Community Center, I'm glad to see that moving ahead, at least as far as this is, I guess, advertising a bit. Wanted to ask, what is the timeframe for construction to begin and to complete?
I'm not sure. Mr. Golden, do you have an idea on the timeframe for the project of Remsen Avenue?
Yeah, we hope to get started on water contract late this year, and according to our architect, the construction will take about little over six months, so we are anticipating completion by, you know, late summer next year.
Excellent. That's wonderful news. And I think that is all I got. Thank you so much.
Anyone else who wish to comment on any of these resolutions? Say not move the resolutions.
Second.
Roll call.
May I ask who's second? Okay, Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President Reseen.
Aye. Do we have any correspondence?
Item number one is a public notification and outreach forum from G E I Consultants. Item number two is a letter from the New Brunswick Soccer League. Item number three is a no further action letter and confident not to sue block four four seven, lot seventeen oh one. Item number four, a public hearing notice from the Franklin Township regarding possible amendment to the land use plan element of Franklin Township master plan, and each correspondence will be forwarded to the appropriate departments.
All right, thank you. Does any council member wish to address the audience at this time?
I'll just look.
Go ahead, Ms. Cradville.
The first thing I would like to call out to people is Saturday's rally against domestic violence. That's going to begin and end at the teen center in Brunswick. It's a critical issue, and those of you who can come out and walk in support of those efforts, that would be great. And the other thing that I wanted to point out is, I kind of hoped that Mr. Cradville was going to say something about it, we got bike lanes, and they've, I've received several positive comments from constituents regarding them, and so I hope that we're at the beginning of many more such installations.
Sir, how?
I'm sorry, it's not. You brought to my attention late this afternoon that the wellness center is going to, of course, open on November second, and the ordinance that first ordered to adopt the bike will not be effective until after the next meeting, which is on November the eighth. And we want to make sure that we've got two-way traffic coming out of the wellness center to Joyce Kilmer Avenue, so it's a resolution that's now being voted, and it recites that in accordance with the emergency provisions in statutes, we're making a change to schedule for, which is the first item on the ordinance, that Patterson Street East, from a hundred and thirty feet, wherever it is, all the way through Milson Street is one way, but the rest of it is two-way. So if you were going to take that ordinance and I'll bet, with that resolution, I'll bet the mileage after a hundred and thirty feet, he had only more, because it wasn't put in.
I'm a little confused on the passage, a hundred and thirty feet from what?
Let me go back to the ordinance.
I believe the intention is that for the period, from a hundred and thirty feet from Joyce Kilmer going in an easterly direction, it'll be two-way traffic to allow the deck to empty and fill up.
The curve here, that part of the line.
The words are a hundred and thirty feet east, the east norway curved line of Joyce Kilmer Avenue, north to Milson Street.
Okay.
And probably a driveway in Milson Street.
So this isn't.
It's a resolution that we made.
That would make number sixty-seven, which we should have brought on separately now.
If you would, I would.
First of all, say maybe we should comment on this?
Happy to hear it, public.
Yes.
I'd like to address.
Not now, you can't adjust. We're talking about this specific resolution. Be with you in a minute. Mr. Cradville?
So Kirkpatrick Street, the block by the county building, is that going to become two-way?
Patrick, this, not according to this resolution, this is just taking Patterson Street back toward to Joyce Kilmer Avenue. It's going to be two-way.
Okay, well, is that possible? I was made to understand that was the plan, and I think it's a good thing.
What, is that part of Kirkpatrick?
Yeah, it might as well just all be two-way up till the very end.
Mr. Patterson?
Counselor, this resolution is just focusing on one portion of multiple changes that are going to be going on. This is just focusing on a portion of Patterson Street from when you exit the parking deck to Joyce Kilmer, to make that two-way traffic, so when you exit the deck, you can get out of town that way. The ordinance that is on for first reading addresses multiple other changes that would be made in terms of making Kirkpatrick Street between Byer and Patterson two-way, accepting the dedication of Kirkpatrick Street between Byer and French Street, and putting in place the traffic control signs and things like that, you know, stop signs and no left turn signs, things like that. But this resolution is just that one portion of Patterson Street.
Okay, but it will be from the.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion to move the resolution.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President Reseen.
All right, we'll move now to the public portion, now's your chance. Name of address, please.
Yes, since I'm in the process of getting my name changed legally, for the record, it's Rodney Williams, but I prefer to call it Rhonda. Anyway, briefly, the reason why I'm here tonight is in guarding to a sign that I've seen posted out in certain buildings in New Brunswick, New Jersey. Now, I've been a citizen of New Brunswick, New Jersey for the past four years. This sign is regarding, that's posted on side of the building saying that representing Robert Wood Johnson University Hospital as America's best hospital. Now, I don't find the sign offensive, but I do find the sign misleading to general public, especially those within the transgender community. Now, I can't speak for everyone else, I can only speak for myself, but I personally feel that, you know, the sign is misleading, that it should be taken down. Now, I'm aware of my obligations, that I could either just take my healthcare someplace else, or just pretend to ignore the sign, pretend it doesn't bother me, but sadly, transgender discrimination is everywhere, not just only in hospitals, but everywhere.
I think first why those signs are probably private, be owned, and rented out, or leased out from the space. If you have a problem, I think you should speak either with the hospital or whoever owns the sign. The city has no power over that unless it's lately over, or anything that makes sense. You don't have any control over that unless you're breaking some ordinance, which I don't believe they are. But I would suggest you contact the hospital or whoever owns the company, which we list on the bottom of the sign. Okay, thanks. Anyone else? Mr. Cradville?
Yes, Charles Cradville, Patterson Street in Brunswick. In accordance with the rules of the meeting, I didn't bring up the bike lanes just yet, but I assure you, it was at the top of my list. I want to commend the city council and everybody for moving ahead with getting our first bike lanes here in Brunswick, and I think it's a great thing. I also want to talk about a couple of other great things. I know Councilwoman Garladi followed through on our idea to get a crosswalk put in at East and in Condit, and I just, as recently as an hour ago, saw people using that crosswalk and saw cars stopping for them, noticed a big improvement there, so I really want to thank the council and commend them for moving ahead with it. Also, is the elevator at the train station working?
I'm not sure.
I noticed all the barricades were gone.
Mr. Patterson, you know?
I went by there two days ago, it was not working, I specifically was taking notice of that myself, and it had a sign posted that it was not working.
I will have to get council.
Okay, I'll keep working on that one. I did want to give an opportunity to Councilman Fleming to answer a question I asked everybody at the last meeting. You know, I'm going to be voting yes on the municipal question about electing our school board, because I think it's a change that will empower the residents of New Brunswick. And I wanted to ask Councilman Fleming if he has a public opinion on this. I know he's an educator, and I think it's a very important issue that people should, you know, educate themselves on. Last time I had asked the council and nobody gave a specific comment or an answer, and if you change your mind, you want to, you know, tell the voters in the press that you'll be voting, I would appreciate that very much.
Yeah, as an educator and as somebody that lives, I mean, not lives, but works in a district with an elected school board, I'm against it, plain and simple, because we have so much dysfunction where I work at, there's so much dysfunction right now with the school board where I work at, where we're up to the point where our mayor was arrested for an issue with the school board, and it was one of his cronies that was on the school board, who he had gotten elected to the school board, to that, where we got in a big mess. We can't pass budgets right now, because right now, our district is full of people with their own agenda. You have twelve, six people on the school board with their own agendas, so we can't get anything passed. Every single year when we're going to pass a budget, budget gets defeated, has to go back to city council, and they cut millions of dollars out of the budget, and then we're dealing with Chris Christie, who has cut millions of dollars out of our budget. So now we're dealing with several programs that would have benefited a lot of the kids, where we can't pass the budget, so now we got a scrap and we have to sacrifice, and there's just dysfunction, it's not working right now. I know it sounds good, where we can say, okay, let's elect this person, that person, that person, but when there's one, when there's an appointed school board, you have one person that's accountable. If you don't like the school board, vote the mayor out. If you don't elect the school board, vote the mayor out, and then you get everybody else out there. But a lot of times what happens is you get a whole bunch of people that get elected, they have their own agenda, and it serves to a lot of dysfunction, and it just doesn't work. We've been through this, down this road before, several times before in the city. It's been defeated over and over and over again. And right now, I take issue with people, where you have some people who might be voting on this issue, who don't have a kid in the school district, they don't pay a single tax in this town, they have nothing to do with this town, but they are pushing for this issue right now. And I take issue with it, because my kids go to the school district, my kids go to the Brunswick Public Schools, I got skin in the game right now. So right now, I'm going on record right now, saying that I do not support that.
Thank you. Any of the other council members want to make their opinions, no?
I don't know, I'm not supportive of the school board.
Okay, you have?
Um, yeah, I also, I, you know, I think obviously we disagree about that, and to that I would say that our status quo is not working right now. I think the 58% graduation rate is abysmal, it's the lowest in the county, and we're the only town in the county that doesn't elect our school board. So I'd like to see that changed, I'll be voting yes on that question. But something we can all agree on is the state question, number one, that would provide $750 million in funding to higher education, and a lot of that would end up here in this, in this great city, and lead to a lot of buildings being renovated, fixed up, classrooms, it wouldn't go towards, you know, stadiums or dorms, it would only go towards academic, you know, direct academic functions. And I think it's a great thing, so I encourage everybody to vote yes on both of those questions on November 6th, and no matter how you feel about it, make sure you get up and vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the council?
Yes, my name is Danielle Moore, I live at 11 Joyce Comer Avenue, I've been a resident for 35 years. I'm here today to talk about traffic. One, I realize the city likes to respond after an incident happens, so I'm here today to ask the city for a speed bump on Columbus Place, that's on Joyce Comer, Llewellyn, Columbus Place, I know everyone's familiar, where Llewellyn Place is, on the other side. That's where I have pictures here to show that my street is very busy, we have a lot of kids, and before something happens, I'm asking the city, can they please respond to putting a speed bump on Columbus Place, just as well as they did on Llewellyn Place? And we have more kids on Columbus Place than Llewellyn. So that's one thing, I have the pictures to show how the kids play.
Over here.
Is that, oh, okay. If the city can respond that before something really happens to one of the children, because I have to say, I'm so scared to even sit outside and really see the children, would one of them get hit. That's one issue, and then the other issue, that's with the police department. Two things, I realize that it takes the police department very long to respond to a 911 call, or a regular call, where it takes about maybe 20 minutes, and I'm wondering, where is the police department, where I don't hardly see any police cars nowhere in the area to stop these gentlemen running through there 70 miles per hour? Within the past three weeks, we have had two hidden runs, and how long has it taken the police department to respond to our calls? I don't see anyone giving out tickets, no, and believe me, I know, they know that I walk around New Brunswick a lot, and I don't see any police in the area. I see a lot of police sitting over there on Remsen Avenue, by the senior citizen building, just in an open parking lot, doing nothing. They're not there for traffic, because that's loaded with speed bumps there, so I don't see why New Brunswick Police Department is sitting over there.
Oh, yes. Is this, say, you, with us, do they occur at any certain times, at rush hours?
I say every time after 6 o'clock.
PM?
Yes.
We can, yeah, run a representative, or we can have Emmie go back and request some which would have your control during that time, maybe to sort of determine.
Yeah, it's hard to determine.
Yeah, just so you know, Mr. Lockman, I was hoping to, or the process for a speed bump?
Well, we've had situations where some people on a, on a street are in favor of a speed hump and others are not, so we've asked that you produce a petition of your neighbors in favor of the speed hump. We will then give it to the traffic commission for them to review, they then make the recommendation to the city council.
Okay.
So if you would do that, you can either give the petition to myself or to the city clerk, we'll make sure the traffic commission gets it.
Okay, I can tell you now, that would be everyone on the block.
Makes it easy.
It's very scary, you can't even sit outside in your yard.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, that's what I'm asking.
Don't forget to talk to your office.
Okay, thank you, I know he's familiar with, like I said, he seems to be walking checking the area.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Hand one up in the back, middle, right. Name and address, please.
Just, I have a street back Condit Street. I was just wanted to ask Mr. Egan, we spoke a couple months back after a couple shootings of the area of Condit, East and South Old Area, and you said that you'd speak with the businesses and see if you would, maybe maybe to maybe fundings or pooling their money together to get some type of security, or just so they can be held accountable, so I was just wondering if you ever spoke with them, because you said you would be back.
We've had one meeting with the business owners, not everybody attended, but we are in the process. Assistant Attorney Shammy has been scheduling a meeting, he was away. I talked with Mr. Hamilton before the meeting, and he said he's putting together a meeting with the business owners again, so we could get this resolved and get them on board and accountable, and we need to hire extra cops or whatever we need to do there. But I will say, I've been around the area in the last couple of weekends, and the police presence has been very good. I mean, we did have an incident there two or three weeks ago, but from what I see, the box truck has been out there on the weekends, they've been setting up cones and things on the corner of G and Nellie's, and I see a big decrease in, I see more traffic up the other end of East and Avenue, and I see less down where all the police presence is. So they are doing that, but we are going to be with the owners and we are, we are doing that.
Now, the second question, in terms of the times, because you're always saying that it's with the, these establishments being allowed to stay open so much later than bars. Now, with the new establishment on the corner of Condit, now that's open till 5:00 AM. The whole issue was the time, and these things were happening after 3:00 AM, 4:00 AM. Now, why, why were they permitted to open until, open a business and remain open till 5:00 AM, when the whole problem with all, with the timing of that? I saw the police, I see the box truck, actually I saw it there on a Sunday, so I don't know why it was there on a Sunday afternoon, there's nothing going on on Sunday. We saw it there on Saturday evening.
They could have been there for the night before, they could have.
No, no, I live, no, no. And then we saw it there in the evening, we were out, we could see it there with the cones and everything, and then this is maybe 1:00 in the morning, 30 minutes later, the building was gone. Again, I'm not saying that, I do see it does help, it's a deterrent, but I just want to know why, you tell us one second, or you spoke with me, or I'm asking why, 3:00, you said, try to have some kind of cuddle, citywide, this is to protect everybody, I'm not just sleeping.
I'm not aware, I'm not aware at all of that establishment being open at 5:00.
That's what it says on their flyers, on their, on the information that they pass out.
The ordinance is don't presently put that. You could have the ordinance to change the name, to impact the businesses, but the whole ordinance at this time, it does not.
Well, could something, I've been coming here for years, and we went from little street bikes and polish kits, to little, you know, more vans, to shootings, I mean, there's like five or six shootings, and I hope it's not a big deal, you know, term of the rest of the city, but it's getting worse and worse, and I've been coming here for years, and nobody can pass anything to shut all the establishments down at the same time, so even when PSC and G is digging, I see, they have to pay for police security, something to protect the people. We live on this street, I'm not, I'm not a student, we're owner occupied, we live there, so why can I not come and go up on my street at a certain hour in the evening, because it is jam-packed, it's mobbed, and just in fear that if somebody doesn't like someone, there can be gun violence. I mean, nothing can be done, I've been coming here for years.
Shammy's in discussion with us, Mr. Egan said.
But this is for years, I understand that.
That's what I'm trying to do, business owners will come together.
But how, but they, all they date to someone, persons will show up and nothing happens?
Well, nothing has happened yet, as far as the business owners are concerned, but something happened on the other end of the story, the other things that we said we were going to do, we had more police presence, more police presence, we have more cops on foot down there, we have, yes, I've seen it, I've seen it myself, they've been on, and I've spoken to the guys that work at night, and they, they put more police presence down there. But we do have to do something with the establishments down there, they have to take responsibility for some of this stuff, too. And we'll get into that, and I'm sorry it hasn't been done in the time and manner that you'd like it to be, but we're certainly working towards that goal.
Again, so when something is, are we going to know, or, I mean, like I said, I've read about the grant for the box truck, yes, there's so many X amount of dollars on the county, whoever gave, the box truck could be there. Once the money runs out, does it go back to, like when we're saying, the police take a very long time to respond? Like I said, I've seen things happen, I've seen how long the police come, the latest incident, when there was all this commotion on the corner of Condit and East, and my street I live on is Condit, it was bumper to bumper traffic, why was there not even the police to stop just the cars? It was a madhouse. People making U-turns, people honking, like still trying to break you there, like 10, all police cars, you know, emergency vehicles, ambulances, I, just, everything just seems very discombobulated. It just seems like, you know, New Brunswick Police is like a bag and tag, they come after the fact, because it's a lot easier to deal with as opposed to, you know, prevention. So I mean, honestly, at this point, I feel as if I see a problem, I'm calling fire department. Because if I say there's a fight, someone's going to show up. And I'm saying this because I've seen this, I've called the police, someone's like, what is going on? And then the dispatcher, I'm like, no, I'm calling, oh, yeah, yeah, someone's coming. I'm looking out of my window, and there's no one there, so like I said, so what's the part, like you were saying, if you're coming so late, so like, what's the point? I mean, if we call, I understand it takes a while to get there, but if you're coming, it's a lot easier to clean up the mess, it's like every shooting on that street, it was never somebody there, or even to try to, something proactive was reactive, okay, some, let's clean the street, hurry up, let's get out there, literally. Within X, I mean, within an hour, two hours, everybody's gone, the street's cleaned up, and nobody knew anything happened. I didn't read about it in the paper. So I just, I just don't understand, we're taxpayers, I mean...
Our problem is, unfortunately, police can't be anywhere all the time. They have a whole city patrol. If they're not there at that moment, you have to make the call, depending on where they are, what they're doing. The matter of time to get there can vary. In a perfect world, we would have police officers in our corner.
No, I understand that, but the reason I complain is because I've been to so many meetings, and other people, they, I've told you, like, certain times...
You told me, I've heard you, if you have specific dates and times, you can talk to the police and go find out how long, we can find out how long it took and what the problem was that night, I mean, coming here now and saying this.
Well, this is really not, all I'm saying, I think it's, where I'm on the phone, and I've seen the commotion in the street, and the police car just cruised right through, nobody can step down, nothing. And I'm on the phone, like, do you know, the car just drove through, over and then it was sent somewhere?
Yeah, you let us know when.
I did, I was on the phone with the dispatcher, I let them know when, it doesn't matter now.
But it does matter now, because we can go back and find out who was responsible that evening.
Well, unfortunately, sometimes when things are happening, I put them, I write time, I do, I write it down.
I understand, but if you're asking us to do something, we need to know when, who was on, who was supervising, who part of it.
Will it make a difference?
Sorry?
Will it make a difference?
We won't know until we have the information, I don't know the answer to that.
But what I'm saying, just in general, the nights that I did call more than one time, I all the same, the police, the car just drove down the street, nobody got out. Don't they know who they dispatched at that time? The same person is calling, so now I have to go chase down police.
If you let us know, we can follow up and find out, that's what I'm trying to tell you.
No, I can do that, but I'm saying, but just in general, I mean, what's the purpose of our police department? Who are they protecting? Like, I was, like I said, I, I see, we already sees, it's like when it's the change of shift, you see the cars going by, they're heading back, you know, to the department, or literally during the day, I'm a lifelong resident, I lived in the same house my entire life, and it's, and it's, you know, sometimes when there's a problem, I do see more, you know, police, and we come, they come around, but then generally, it is like very difficult to see a police car in the evening anywhere. I don't know where they're hanging around, or what's going on, I understand there's a lot of problems. But, but when we tell you, like, I've been, like I said, that's really, I'm saying, I know what you're saying, to call if there's other problems, we, I've been there so many times, saying very specific times, certain, during the weekend, certain hours, and then until something happens, then there's a presence, again, it's reactive.
We, the city said, did patrols happen, increase in that area?
I understand, I live there, I see it, but it's, it's increased for the timing.
Captain Miller, it's not going to go away, we're not going to send it away, we're going to have a presence there, but we are definitely, we are definitely leaving the owners, we walked down like the last evening. Mr. Shammy was setting up a breach with the owners.
Okay.
Anyone else?
I wanted to get the, I requested the specific date and time from Captain Miller about the training that Danielle Maydon is doing, and he said he would bring the actual date and time.
Captain, is that available?
July 2nd. Thank you, thank you. And also, also I wanted to comment on the elected school board issue, because Councilman Fleming, you also agree that you don't want an elected school board. So my question is, are you comfortable with the current educational system that we have now?
I know Mr. Fleming had answered that, but before, before Mr. Fleming, I'll just say this, I think, and I said it before, that there are a lot of factors that go into the performance of children in schools, not the least of which is family, not the least of which is background as far as English as its first or second language, movement within the district, from one area to another, time when people do enter the school, whether they come in here in third grade or fifth grade, and the difference in the scores of kids that start school in kindergarten and finish through 12th grade, I think if you looked at those as well. I just think there's so many factors to make a blanket, blanket statement that the schools are terrible, it's not fair to the teachers or students or anyone else involved with the school. Admittedly, I'm not an expert, but that, you asked, that's my opinion.
I mean, I think from 2007 to 2012, we had a hike in his span, residents going to the schools. But if you go prior to 2007, you go back past 2007, we had dominantly African-American, we still had a failing school system. So, what's the, I mean, are you, are you, are they going to go further, is it even worse?
I don't know. From me, like, you went to New Brunswick, I went to New Brunswick schools also, and I'm never going to be comfortable with the model for urban education everywhere, not just in New Brunswick, all across America, it's a crisis right now in urban school districts all across. So as I said before, it's not just looking at our district, I don't think that just by electing, elected school board, that all of a sudden, we're going to wipe away all the problems. The problems are endemic for a long time. And as I said before, and I'll stand on it, until parents, until everybody, until teachers, until leaders, until everybody, it's supposed to be, when you're in a crisis situation, it's supposed to be all hands on deck approach. It's not just putting it off on the teachers, it's not just saying, you know what, because what happens in urban school districts a lot of times, and I know it because I've been working in it, a parent will say, you know what, here's my kid, he can't read, he can't write, he can't do this, perform a miracle right now on my kid. But what happens, we have, urban teachers want to, you have to be a social worker, you have to be a parent, you have to be a doctor, you have to be every single thing to everybody. But what we have to do in urban school districts, it has to be an all hands on deck approach, not just throwing blame, here it is, you know what, let's elect this person, and all of a sudden, we're going to wipe everything away. Everybody has to take account for it. Every single person from the top, from the superintendent, all the way down to the parent, all the way down to the lunch worker, anybody that's with them, that's going to touch that child during the day, things aren't going to improve till everybody gets on the same page. So we can't just think that we can just wipe away and say, you know what, I'm going to elect this person right now, I'm going to elect this person. Then all of a sudden, what happens? Everybody starts butting heads, and then what happens? Who suffers? The kids in that district suffers. We've been having these problems for a long time. I went to New Brunswick schools from kindergarten all the way up to seventh grade, until my parents exercised, where they said, you know what, you can't stay there. It wasn't because we had so much money and I had so much other opportunity, it's because they said, you know what, you can't, we don't want you to go there right now for, for certain issues. And it was, it had to do with sports, it had to do with a lot of different issues. But until we all get on the same page and stop blaming each other, nothing is going to change. And I'm telling you that right now from experience from somebody who went there, I had my kids in the school, I would never be with, with whatever the percentage is right now, my kids go to New Brunswick Public Schools right now, and that's where they're going to stay at right now, and I'm committed to that completely. So I got, like I said before, I got skin in the game. So I got, like I said before, I got skin in the game. I wouldn't just invest in something that I didn't believe in. My two investments right now are in fourth grade and in first grade. I wouldn't just keep them in there just for an experiment and say, you know what, I got to keep you guys in here. Down the road, if I decide to put them somewhere else, that's my choice. But right now, my two investments go there and that's why I'm not satisfied right now until things get better.
So as my grandfather would say, you got six in one hand, half a dozen in the other. If they're suffering now, wouldn't you expect some type of change to see if they?
My kids are suffering. My kids are doing, I'm at school every single day. My kids are not suffering right now.
No, but look, I'm making, I'm making, I'm making a general statement. Because I mean, you could, I mean, you could say the schools are fine, but when you have a, what is it, a fifty-eight percent graduation rate? But the attendance is ninety percent? You got to put that all on the parents? The parents are getting them to school.
But that's not enough. That's not enough.
No, the parents are usually, the parents, the, the parents are getting them to school. And like you said, it is a joint effort. I don't agree that the, I mean, you know, like I said, I have this kid, my students are honorable students. Do I sit back and say every student's supposed to be like, mom? No, there's circumstances and there's situations. I'm not at every parent teacher's house. I'm here, I'm here in my council meetings, they have my kid's school. When I said the effort that her teachers and their teachers put in is different than the effort of, of certain other teachers in, in, basically saying New Brunswick, what I've got. So I mean, elected school board, some people are with it, some people are against it, but if we're failing now. And you can't put the blame on the Hispanics because blacks failed. I don't think we had a success. No, I'm saying, I'm saying with the language barrier and all that, I keep hearing that. It's not a factor when blacks fail just as bad.
But when, can I?
So the answer is, so the answer, it was a simple, we took it too far. I just wanted the yes or no question to, if you were comfortable with the current school system as we speak? And you got, you took me around corners on.
No, we know. I mean, I'm just, you know what I'm saying, there's factors. We look at different factors everywhere. Right now, we talked about this before, we measure, our measurement right now is testing. It's saying, you need to pass this test this day. So we're going to see, all year we've done it. We've done it in sixth grade. We've took you from here to here. At the end of the year, how are you going to do on this test right now? And as I said before, you know who makes money off those tests? The corporations. The corporations who make up those tests. Fifteen years ago, they said, you know what, they pulled together a whole bunch of people, said, how are we going to educate our kids? They let the people from IBM and different technology firms sit on, sit on those boards and decide how we're going to educate kids. You know what came out of that? They said, we need better technology. Guess who makes the money? The people who are sitting on that board. So now it's testing. Now all of a sudden, we got a government who says, you know what, you have to pass this test on this day. That's not education. That's telling people how you're going to take the test that day. So now you have people like in Woodbridge right now where they put so much, so much pressure on them to pass the test. So what do the teachers now do? You know what? Here are the test answers right here. You know, because if my pain or if my education is going to be based on that, this is what we're going to do right now. Not saying all teachers do that, but that's what it opens up the door for. Like I said, urban education, we have to look at different models, how we're going to educate kids. And yes, language is a barrier. You tell somebody, first speaker, first, first generation speakers, you have to pass an English test. We got people who've been speaking English all their lives who can't even pass an English test. You know what I'm saying? And then we said blacks, yes. When we were in the school district, a lot of us, a lot of times, I can't sit down. Sometimes you can't sit down and pass a standardized test. There's a lot of factors to it. Some kids freeze up on the test day. Some kids, you might even get up that morning, because I remember they used to tell us, make sure your kids eat the smallest things. You're in a poor community, you know, some people just say, okay, make sure your kids eat breakfast that day. Some people, that's, they take for granted that they're going to be able to eat breakfast that day. But then some kids, that's a big thing to come to school and eat breakfast. But they used to tell you, make sure that you have food in your system so you do better on the test. There's little things right now. I had a kid today that was taking the test. The girl, she, she's first generation. I have a lot of Haitian students. First generation, simplest thing, I said, okay, all you have to do is get up, say your name and just read off these questions. The girl broke down and started crying today because that's how much of a barrier that was for her. For me, I'm just like, you know what, all you have to do is say your name. I'll help you out. She could not do it. If I had used that same standard with every other student, I would have had to fail her. But you know what I did? I said, you know what, you stay after. I'm going to help you out with that. That's what you need from teachers and you need parents. When I send, when I send the notes home to the parents, they got to help them out also. You can't just expect, you know, send you, but just in general, you can't just say, just get your kids to school and then that's it. You got to be able to have, I used to have kids in East Orange where, where the littlest things, taking a bus to school. They had to worry about getting robbed, getting stuck up. My first two years of teaching, I lost two students. One of them got stabbed on the way to school, tried to run to the school because that was his sanctuary. He bled to death before he even got to school. Because that was his only sanctuary right there. I had kids who committed suicide before because there was too much pressure on them. These kids right now, especially in urban settings, they go through a lot of pressure just to say, you got to pass this test. We got to look at a different way to educate our kids and it's endemic all across. And like I said, it has to come all hands on deck instead of us pointing fingers at each other. And that's the way it's got to go. I'm a shill.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not a point of favorites. You know what I mean? I'm just an advocate that it seems like everybody's putting all the blame on the parents and taking away from it. I want to balance this together. And come November sixth, whether we have an elected school board or not, we're still going to be faced with the same issues. And after November sixth, regardless, I'm not, it's obvious now, I'm going to vote. I'm going to vote elected school board. But after November sixth, whether we get that or not, is there a plan in place to move forward? Because it seem like we know all the problems. We know all the problems. But is there a plan in place we all can be involved with that could move this city forward and get these kids, which are sitting right in the city at, you know, one of the beautifulst institutions, universities the country has, they offer. It seem like the doors closed is so far away to them. If we could put a plan together to get them in this institution, there's a lot of rougher students in here now. I bet you none of them are New Brunswick graduates. It is what it is. None of them are New Brunswick graduates. So let's put a plan together because people are coming from all over the country to enjoy this beautiful university. Why can't our kids enjoy it also? So I'm all, I'm all for a plan after November sixth, whether, regardless of which way it goes, that we start getting these kids, Hispanics, blacks, whites, doesn't matter, into this university, our university of their choice.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I do have one, one more question. I'm sorry. I just wanted to check with the bicycle path. Now, is it okay, Livingston Avenue where you have your signs, no bike riding? But is it okay for, like I say, where I have a five-year-old, where I ride my bike with him? If I respect the, the people passing the, now, would I be breaking the law from riding the bicycle with my five-year-old son where he cannot ride in the street? Now, would I be breaking the law during that? I would like to know.
About riding on the sidewalk?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So riding on the sidewalk with, with Livingston Avenue where there's no bike riding. But I can ride in the street because my five-year-old can't ride in the street. So that's what I'm asking you. Would that still be breaking the law?
Well, I have to say, that's a very good question.
Oh, due to where? The captain knows how I do. I ride with my son. I don't want to get a ticket. So I, thank you.
Yes. Council vice president Nessar.
Yes.
Council member Fleming.
Yes.
Council member Garland.
Aye.
Council president, Cassine.
Aye.